Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the organization and first commission meeting of 2025. Just because we're sitting where we're at now doesn't mean anything until after the organization meeting is done. However, we're going to start with the pitch and then I'm going to do a couple of things. And then we'll get into the rest of meeting. So Commissioner, Mr. Burnett, we, or Commissioner for that. First, I'd like to welcome the new office holders. First, we've got to talk about Judge Blake. Judge Blake had several things. And you've had something done for him where he had been in public service for how long?
Fifty years.
So fifty years of public service, if you've ever worked with the public, you know, that was a great thing. So I'd like to congratulate Judge Blake on a successful career. When in the election had taken his place is now Judge Fast. We have Commissioner Burnett. And in our sheriff, we had Sheriff Fridley, who was here, and then he left. Then we had Sheriff Morris, and he stepped back down to be chief. We have Sheriff McMullin. In our, in the positions, we have Judge England, Anthony Salaberty, Mr. Young, Eddie, and Jack Buddha. So congratulations, all those folks. And, you know, I skipped Commissioner Luis's because he did, he did some great things while he was here. But people chose, made a different choice, so just wanted to state. Next, I would like to talk about. Well, let's take a look back in order to move forward. Commissioner Taylor and Commissioner Luis and myself made a commitment to making sure that we took care of the entire county from one border to the other. Hasn't been done before, and we stepped up and made it happen. It wasn't done by one, it was done by all three of us. It was important that we did that because we felt that parts of the county had been neglected for quite some time. And we didn't want to continue to see that happen. So we were fortunate enough to have some funding, and we spread the funding pretty evenly. Anything you'd like to add about that?
Not really. I mean, originally, we had, we had hoped to use a large portion of the money to match a state grant to expand broadband into areas of the county that don't have it. But the state grant fell through, so we found ourselves toward the end in a position where we had to allocate the money by the end of last calendar year, or else we would lose it. And so we did come up with a chart, and we donated substantial amounts of money to community centers in the different regions, senior centers, childcare centers, food banks, those sorts of things that we, where we thought it would pay it forward to the citizens of Fayette County. We've contributed to the the Thanksgiving feast that is done every year here on the plateau. And we did similar ones in Ansted and Montgomery. And I feel like, you know, I do wish we could have invested the money in, in some of the things. I think the community centers will last longer, and some of the ones were for more immediate needs, but I think we did the best we could with the, with the money we had, and we did spread it out quite well. We gave a lot of money for the valley, a lot of money to Meadow Bridge and Danies. And I don't think any of us have seen that kind of funding, including at the county level, for a long time. We also saved some money here for the plateau. We're going to invest in upgrades that the courthouse really needs and the memorial building, which has been long neglected. So also the park, the Fayette County Park, we're going to do some work there. So that's kind of a, in a nutshell, where the money went. Okay, thank you. That's it.
All right. Before we do the organizational order, I want to remind ourselves and our newest commissioner of a few things. We're a body of three, not a body of one. Not one of us can say, okay, yeah, go ahead and do that. At least we have to have a majority vote in order to confirm that. Fortunately, in the past, we've done pretty well together, and I hope that we continue to do that. Anything along those lines you'd like to talk about? Okay. All right, then Ruth. I'll let you talk about the organizational order.
So far, it's the same as last year, needing to elect a president, so you guys will need to. And then purchasing agent. Last year, it was up to fifteen thousand dollars. It was me, and then.
A commissioner that wasn't president, yes.
Was back though, right? And then you said every two weeks on Wednesday would be the regular meetings, but the schedule subject to change, basically. So you start with the electing president, and then you're all about purchasing agent in the back of purchasing.
Right, we'll open the floor for nominations for president.
Who wants to do it?
You can do it. Either one of us can do it. Greg can do it. But he rose his eyes really. Not a clown.
I recommend the concept. My first, my first year was a learning, was a learning period, for sure. I would love to do it because I think I run a good meeting, and I'm good at, you know, communicating, letting everybody know what's going on, as John knows. But, you know, I understand it. You guys would rather have John serve.
If somebody went to a nomination.
I'll nominate John Brenneman for president of the county commission.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor? Okay, congratulations, me. Okay. All right. Allison was the person that backed you up on the, on the amounts greater than fifteen thousand and for the sheriff's department.
And sheriff's department.
Yes. She'd be the primary person for the sheriff's department.
And that's because her son is a deputy. I wonder if there'd be a conflict of interest.
So you continue.
Yeah, that should be that.
And we will continue to do our meetings on Wednesdays unless the calendar so mentions a different date, which we have a few, possibly the levy and things like that.
So we'll all have to read through analogies stuff.
Probably need to make a motion for me to continue to do that.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to approve Allison to continue as the fiduciary backup and the main contact for the sheriff's department.
And Ruth for the primary.
And yes, Ruth for the primary.
The second.
All those in favor?
So now there's going to be a lot of stuff in the packet that we're about to print at some point, and you guys will have to stay inside.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, one other thing, too. We couldn't make it here without our staff. Ruth does an excellent job with our folks. So I'd like to recognize Ruth and everything that she does. Okay, next will be the board assignments for the commissioners. Do you have, is there a?
I have my old list of them.
I do, too.
The only one I really care about being on is NRG RDA because I was a local chair of that board in December, which is advantageous to us.
Yes, and you were also on the health department board.
I was, but they never invited me to their meeting. Let's see, you were on the transit board. Did you find a list?
Yeah. Yeah, I have one.
So I've got the big list.
Yeah, I had to get it so I could see it. Green State Commissioner is Jack. He took your spot. The LRA, we have that open. We have Hail to you on there. The Leo, which is the local elected official board. I was on it. However, I would like to give that to Greg. If you find out, okay. You're on Newberg Forge, and that's a tremendous honor to be the chair of that committee. So congratulations.
Or condolences. We'll see.
I'll be on MPO since it's the same as the transit. MPO is Politon Planning Organization that deals with the roads. Route nineteen specifically. Region four. But Greg be the contact for Solid Waste Authority.
If it's okay. What about Parks and Recreation, like Greg be the contact authority?
And we have that.
Yeah, Parks and Recreation Authority.
Hey, Greg will be the contact for Parks and Recreation Authority.
That includes there over the memorial building and all that stuff.
Is there a commission seat on that?
Kristen, there's advisory seat. Farmland Protection Board, we need an advisory person for that.
It's your jam.
Okay, I'll do that one. All right. What about the LEPC?
It's not meeting right now.
Okay.
I mean, if it reconstitutes, maybe.
So we'll hold on to that one.
And region four, you're on it.
Region four, yeah, I got it. Okay, so that has everything. Amy, did you capture it? Ruth?
What was before LEPC and after parks? What did you say? I missed one.
Farmland Protection.
Farmland Protection.
And who's doing that?
Yeah, John, I will.
Who are we going to put on LRA?
Oh, yeah, LRA.
You want me to?
Either you or Greg.
Greg, what's your interest in being on LRA?
Well, I'm on three right now. Let's start with three. You, you can, if you don't mind, I mean, let me start and we'll work our way up.
Okay, I just normally we would try not to do LRA and NRG RDA, but.
I see that. That would be a sort of a conflict. Oh, I can take it.
Jenna's running, you know, Jenna's the chair of LRA. But I can take one of the ones you gave him. I'll do the parks.
That's all right. I can do the LRA and take, but I'll take four.
Yeah, the others are just, just, just sitting there listening. You're not doing anything.
Some of them you don't, I mean,
I'm okay.
Park director's usually in here talking to us about what needs to be done.
Yeah, which is Mr. Bill, and he is, he's all good. Good job at the park. I put Reese's definitely.
Yeah, well, we got a lot of things up. We've been.
All right. Okay, is that all we have now for organizations?
Yep. So you want to just turn that into a motion and?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we had proper, proper movement. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, it passed. Thank you for being patient with us during the organization part. Now we can get to the meeting bunch. All right. Mr. Eddie Young. Exonerations.
Do you want me to explain to you what they were here?
No, I've, I've watched you for two years.
Okay, okay. So there, there you go. Didn't want to point out to all of you that there are several businesses on here and older tax tickets. If you see a star by any of these tax tickets, these are old tax tickets. And the reason those are, we're finding those, is the sheriff hired a company to go after going for personal property. And that's.
I think we did that.
Well.
We did.
Someone hired him, and it's a good thing because other counties are doing that as well. Anyway, there, that's why you're seeing some, you know, there's no, the older. We had to get those off the books.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll move that we approved the exonerations. Were there any combined events that we did?
I have one. I couldn't bring it to you because I need to know who the president was before I can type it up. So I want to get back and do that right now and bring it back over, just on one.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, I'll second. All those in favor? The refunds on this one?
No, no, it's just me. Just that, I mean, just the one thing. All right.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll bring it over that solvency period. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Payroll. I'll make a motion to approve payroll for one ten twenty-five.
Second.
Been properly moved to second. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, next vouchers and invoices. Commissioner Taylor, you've had some questions.
Now I can't find my sticky. Hold on a minute. Well, I have it in my bag, so. So there were a couple of, this is with regard to the fire departments. There were a couple of extraordinary expenses that were not routine expenses. They're typically budgeted that were five-figure expenses that they're seeking reimbursement on, that I think should have come through the commission first. If it's a routine expense or something in the regular operations, that's once, if it's a purchase of new equipment, or in one case, getting your whole HVAC system replaced in a city-owned building, I think those things need to come through the county commission first. So there was a twelve thousand dollar tool expense from Oak Hill for a tool that wasn't pre-approved. In addition to, there's an additional problem with Oak Hills. Oak Hill only has ten thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents left in its budget until the end of June of this year. It is overspent and doesn't even have the amount for that tool. Would we, were we to approve a reimbursement? Further, I have a couple of questions about Armstrong Creek purchases. We decided some time ago that we will not be paying fire association memberships out of the fire levy, which is an excess tax. So that one should not be approved. There was a Sam's Club purchase for hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents with no receipt attached for us to see what that was for. And then there was a Tudor's purchase for eighty-four seventy-two, which I'd also like to know about because typically we do not purchase food out of the fire levy. Those were on a Capital One credit card. The PAX Fire Department had similarly a Gino's charge for fifty-eight thirty-four that I have concerns about, and then I already mentioned, but I'll be specific. Smithers has paid a five thousand dollar deposit to Doggerel Heating for a fourteen thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollar HVAC replacement that we did not pre-approve. So those things I think should be accepted from vouchers and invoices for the reasons I stated.
I would also like to mention that again, we need to make sure that we're not paying taxes as fire departments. We have several receipts with tax located on them. Your, your lows and your other places that you go to should not be charged your taxes, because you're a tax exempt. So we need to get back on watching those again, too. So would you like to go ahead and make a motion?
Well, before we do, can we, can we continue to discuss a minute?
Sure.
So as we, we talked about with the fire departments, their expenses. We're not, we're not questioning the validity of the need of the equipment or pool. We're questioning the process.
Right.
Okay. So what is the process?
Well, in, in Oak Hill's case, in Oak Hill's case, and they know this because it came out in another meeting, and Domeno was really alarmed to learn because they were just submitting every single receipt apparently through the city. They were just sending everything to us. And then when she realized they were almost out of money, you know, she kind of balked. But in Oak Hill's case, you know, they've got ten thousand dollars left to last them. It shows that they've been overspending, or Oak Hill hasn't been paying its part yet. I mean, you know, I'm not sure how you know, divide up who's going to pay what over there. But yeah, it's, the process is, I mean, they, they need to come in and get something extraordinary piece of equipment or HVAC on the agenda because that's, that's taking away from other things. Like, we would have to hear that and make a decision on it. Because those are high-dollar items. You know, one was twelve thousand, the other was almost fifteen thousand. So they would come in and they would get our approval, and then they would go ahead and get it done.
So what you're, what the, the question is, the process has to be refined and followed, and we're not objecting to the expense for, per se, as, as of yet.
I'm not sure about the, I may be objecting to the expense in Smithers, the building owned by Smithers and upgrading that building without them coming to us and asking for it out of an excess tax. I'm not sure that's where it should have been paid. With regards to the tool that's absolutely covered in the fire levy, John explained to me what the tool was. So I really don't have a problem with the tool, except Oak Hill has overspent this year, and it can't afford a tool out of this budget. That's, that's that issue. And it should have come, you know, even if it could, it should have come in advance and said, hey, we'd like to have another Dolls of Life in case we've got our Dolls of Life truck deployed somewhere else. I mean, they should have said that and told us the costs and then, you know, gotten our approval before spending it.
All right. Thank you. To, to go along with that, I feel that we need to draft a letter stating the expenses and letting the departments know what expense money they have left for the rest of the year, rest of this year.
I think so, too. And Ruth has all that. I mean, she handed us a copy of it.
Right. And may I add, John, and I don't want to interrupt you, but may I add that we, we put in the process of which they need to follow and, and the you don't, we avoid all of this.
Well, we have told them multiple, 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 multiple times.
Well, we'll put it in a, in a letter, and we'll make sure that they understand.
I'm pretty sure it's been in a letter before, but we can do another letter.
We'll do another.
Policy.
Yeah.
In June or May.
Yeah. Well, sometimes you have to be told a couple of times. Mr. Kripshanks, you have something to say?
There was a policy written out, but it was never sent to the departments.
Okay, good deal. But that's what we'll make sure we've got that.
Were not possible according to the date back.
Okay. That would be, yeah. It needs rest up, doesn't it?
Well, if that's the case, we'll get the state tax department in here to advise us on that. Oh, you're talking about the open checkbook?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they're about.
Could have given money, like, we were on it already, and they said they're not ready for it. It's under state law that the publisher want to be on that.
By January twenty-sixth.
They rolled out this check, auditor's checkbook, and they weren't ready for all the people that they were requiring to be part of it by the deadline. They were requiring them to be a part of it. So that's, that's, yeah, that's a matter that we can, I don't think we need to require something that's impossible.
With all cooperation, we, we can get this through. This is not an insurmountable.
Yeah, yeah. And that, that was a large deadline in your contract.
Sure.
And when the good way of the contracts leave something in line with that problem because it will change, pressures change, states change.
Hey, Steve, if, if you want to reach back to Armstrong Creek, if that Sam's purchase was department-related and not like food or something?
I, I can check. Probably those Tudors are probably when they were out on the lawn calling in the night.
But that's different. I mean, the fire levy should be for extraordinary things. They have other budgets they can pull food money out of.
But it needs to be, and, and we, maybe I don't know, it needs to be explained, that's what we.
Well, that's, that's the purpose for this draft of the letter to each chief, that they can explain to their, their people what they can, what they can't do, and how they are to go further in the process. We have no problem with someone being out eighteen hours and, and on a, on a job and getting something to eat. I mean.
No, it's just whether it should be paid from the excess tax. I don't want to tax people who can't afford to feed their families just to feed firefighters. I'm, I'm think what needs to happen is that needs to come out of another, but food needs to come out of another budget. That's regular operating expenses. We're, we're dealing with extraordinary operating expenses, like buying fire engines and equipment that you wouldn't otherwise be able to purchase and things like that. You've got state funds that can pay for some of these other things. So the taxpayers don't say, okay, so they got to take out at McDonald's, you know, or whatever, even though, you know, yes, they're on a call and they should have food. But we often do try to bring food and provide food through our emergency services on the big things.
We're just talking about what category we put it in.
Correct.
That's all we're, that's all we're talking about. So it's not that.
Not whether it's justified, but, but these are fire levy reimburseals that we're looking at here. So that's why.
And I agree with this. We have to put it into proper category.
Things like that, they just need now, trying to have two different credit cards. Take the credit card bill with three different checks.
Well.
Yeah, they could just pay, they could pay part of it with one account and have us pay, you know, reimburse for the other parts.
Yeah, we can work that. That's, it's not insurmountable. We're all.
That's that combined about the John is the same.
Okay, so we've got a motion on table about the reimbursements.
Right, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. Properly moved to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ruth, we're two minutes away from our bid opening at nine thirty. So let's go ahead and do this.
Well, did you give the minutes and why?
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
There was one error in the minutes that I noticed. The five hundred dollars did not go to VFW. We think it went to the American Legion for the boys and girls. Wouldn't that be one of them, Eugene?
It was. I don't think it was the VFW, but it was a boys and girl.
It was the boys and girls.
I can't get on my computer, I tell you. But it wasn't the VFW, because I saw it and I was like.
I can't remember. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the minutes will be pending further in.
Does that change?
That one change.
Yeah.
You could probably still sign.
Yeah, we'll go ahead. I mean, otherwise, they're good. So I'll second.
And I can fix that page.
All right. Properly move to second. All those in favor? Okay.
Greg would have abstained on that one because these are minutes from last year.
True.
Okay, do you want me to go ahead and knock?
Yes, I am.
And we have a petition to combine two parcels of land that are owned by the same individual. I'm going to move, we approve those.
Second. Properly moved to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And we're going to move that we approve the estate settlements.
Under that estate settlement is the recommendation.
We're going to hear that one separately. So absent the Pauline Samples Estate, which we're going to have a hearing on.
Okay, second.
All faithful. Go ahead. Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Ruth, we've got the bid opening.
Yeah, we had one bid. It is. And I can guess. Yeah. And I, um, I've held the back thing off because they didn't specify what it was, but it's literally one of them. So.
Where was the bid published?
In the, I know when you registered to Carol and wherever.
Wish we could start putting our bids out broader. I mean, I, I like local vendors, but for some things like, you know, tech, technology like this.
We put, we do put it out broad, but they're from Texas. So.
So they got it.
They're definitely not local.
Is it, this is the same group we heard about.
I'm fairly certain they're the only ones that can provide both technologies that works together. For their song.
Yeah.
I don't remember this figure. The one we got breathing on it.
No, because we had to add something if you remember.
Yeah.
Amount or.
Can we?
I can't wait to come in here.
I'd, I'd rather postpone it to the next meeting. I like time to look at it.
Well, you can postpone it for review and then decide on the twenty second.
You know, we have one bids and we can award the bid today and we can all look at this. Yeah.
We can take it from the next.
So we'd like to move to postpone a decision on the purchase of the equipment to. What is our next meeting date?
Twenty second.
Twenty second, January twenty second.
Not second.
Okay, properly moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there an amount?
Oh, yeah, it was, um. I was going through it. I'm not sure if I got all of it. Two, two hundred nine thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-five cents.
Is the tickets in the boxes? Cause you asked for those boxes to be added.
Yeah.
Probably, probably. I just want to look at it more closely. And I want Greg to have a chance to work at it either.
We make copies.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we get three copies of those.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do the hearing.
Yeah, and, um. Ms. Harold said that she would, uh, appear by phone. So since we have people attending today. We have a way to, we'll call her up on this.
Yeah.
Run it across my desk and get it closest speaker as possible. Maybe we'll try again. You wanna? Knock down.
Hey Michelle, can you tell Lisa to tell her the number that will show up? I was saying, I think it says county clerk when you call. And maybe she'll answer, but maybe she was trying to call.
Right there, maybe her.
It is.
She's bringing her phone.
That county commission?
Yes, this is Joanna Harold.
Okay.
Hi, Ms. Harold. This is Allison Taylor. I'm one of the county commissioners. Um, we've got you on speakerphone in the public meeting. And we're about to hear the issue regarding the estate of Pauline Samples. Now, I believe the prosecuting attorney and the county clerk have some information they're going to present first. We'll go from there.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Um. The question, I think Michelle needs, she just let me know something she wants to discuss with me about this.
Okay.
Um, well, I mean, I can, if we. Well, I don't think it's necessarily a secret, although I'm not a lawyer. Mr. Harry did give us a recommendation. And his recommendation was to remove the current. Uh, remove Joanna Harold because her, because of the suit she filed in North Carolina. Shows that she does not have the best interest of the estate in mind as the administrator. All of those letters, CTA, DBN. In my opinion, as the clerk who does. That that matter in. Has nothing to do with the West Virginia estate. The estate in West Virginia, which was opened. Almost 20 years ago, can close here. All the heirs by will equally own their. Eighth, I think, seven, eighth or several of the estate. Matter of the adverse possession of the property in North Carolina is a North Carolina. Court. Issue has nothing to do with us. The estate is opener. But you guys can take Mr. Harris' recommendation and appoint the other ladies that wanted to be. The administrator. All that has to happen here is that the estate closed for West Virginia.
That's the final settlement paperwork I'm submitting?
No, that's all that needs done.
Well, so somebody has to be appointed to do that.
True.
And do we have someone who's willing to do that and has the information? I mean.
I mean, all we have to do is give them the paper. Rent it.
But it's still, somebody still has to be responsible for preparing the final settlement paperwork and submitting it.
Sorry, but it could be anybody. And I don't see why, where her suit in North Carolina has any standing on whether or not she can send that paper to all of her. Relatives to have them all sign it. That's my opinion. But it, you guys, it's up to you guys and, and I know, and Anthony has, you know, more insight into the law than.
What about the sheriff?
Sheriff can do it. Uh, generally is. I thought there was another family member that wanted.
There are. I think there was a lady that appeared even. For the Pauline Samples. No.
Hello, love.
Yeah, yes.
I came in in May and responded and was asked to be an administrator. Since I was the eldest daughter.
Well, there's, there's some paperwork that needs to be filed here in West Virginia to get this matter closed here. Is, is it how much paperwork is involved, Michelle?
Uh, there would either be. The affidavit and waiver, final settlement, whichever, all heirs would need to sign that. For beneficiaries of the will.
Are you still in touch with all the other beneficiaries?
No, ma'am.
Or they, or they can do a receipts, uh. Distributions and dispersments. Um, in which they're supposed to do an accounting of how everything was divided. Um. If I recollect, the will was provided everything equally. It has been a while since I looked at it. I apologize. Um, but she would probably not have that information because that was originally done by her brother 20 years ago. He had completed everything up until that last step. 20 years ago. And then he passed. And then it just kind of.
Language.
Yeah.
What, what were you gonna say, Ms. Harold?
No, I just said my brother dispersed everything and there's no funds left in the accounts.
Are you aware of how he dispersed them?
Uh, I have some documentation. I don't have all of the documentation entirely. But I do have some documentation that how he dispersed funds. And distributed, uh. That's why I have never pursued any of this because he did disperse everything. And I took a reduction in my, um, son. And all the other siblings, uh, got an increase. Because of the property in North Carolina.
What do you recommend? I mean, we think if, if the sheriff did it, would. Through your office, could we send?
So here's, I mean, the estate can be closed in one of two ways. We either have to do the short form. As it's referred to, which requires the cooperation and the signature of all the heirs. And I'm kind of inferring from what I'm hearing that that isn't going to happen. Um, getting that document to everybody and getting them to sign it. And then that document showing up here, from what I'm hearing, it's not going to happen. So the second option is the long form. And basically the long form sets forth how the estate was distributed. It's filed with the county clerk, it's sent to all the heirs, and then the heirs have the ability to come before the county commission and complain about the distribution of the estate. I'm. I'm not. I don't necessarily think Ms. Harold's claim of adverse possession. Is. In contradiction with her fiduciary obligations on the estate. If she basically was saying, I don't care what the will says, this property is mine, I'm taking it. That'd be a different story, but she, she's advancing a legal claim against this real estate. Which she's entitled to do. Um, but at the end of the day, I mean, I do agree with Michelle that. I'm, I'm not licensed to practice in North, I'm assuming North Carolina is the same as West Virginia. The issue of adverse, adverse possession is going to have to be litigated in North Carolina. I mean, the, one of the fundamental rules of property disputes is you're supposed to go to the county where the property is located and petition the court in that county. So.
Let me ask this. What if Michelle's office were to send a letter with the form? You know, we could send a separate form to each sibling, right? We don't have to send the same form as long as they're all together.
But we, we still need somebody to be personal representative for the estate and they need to handle everything. So as I see it, you have two options. You can either let Ms. Harold submit the long form. And let the heirs complain about it, or you can relieve Ms. Harold and appoint another one of the heirs, or you can appoint, um, Sheriff McMullin, uh, to step in. Uh, to do the long form. I mean, the problem that Jess is going to have. Is he's going to be walking into this thing completely blind. And he's not necessarily going to have the vaguest idea as to how anything was distributed.
Well, I agree with that, but, but. You don't think, so one of the options couldn't be that the clerk's office sends the form out to each of the siblings and says, if you don't object to how the. Estate was handled in West Virginia, sign this form and return it to my office.
There's no, there's no authority to appoint. I mean, essentially you're, you're placing the county clerk in the position of personal representative, and I don't believe there's any statutory authority that allows for that.
No, I wouldn't. No, I'm just trying to think of practical ways to, to handle this. It's more likely to open a letter from her than a letter from her probably, but, um.
I mean, Michelle can do the paperwork and Jess can sign off on it as the administrator, but. I mean, the statute, the statute allows the sheriff to be appointed as the administrator of the estate.
So if he did it and we wanted to try the short form way. We could still do it that way under him.
We could, but that would require every single one of the heirs signing off on the distribution.
We solve one problem, but we've still got another.
Well. Given the conflict that I'm kind of inferring exists among the heirs, I'm guessing there, they may not cooperate with this process. I mean, that's speculation on my part, but.
So may I ask a question?
Sure.
Ms. Harold does the long form, submits it. We go through and, and the county commission approves it, goes through. West Virginia washes their hands of it basically and it goes to North Carolina.
Yes. Yeah. If Ms. Harold submits the long form and roasts the whole hoops. The heirs at that point have the ability to complain or they can accept it.
Or contest.
Yes.
Correct. That's what I'm hearing. That's what I heard you say, yes.
And I question if all the heirs are still alive.
They're not.
Probably not. I mean.
They're, but they're, 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 they're heirs.
So basically what happens is, is if one of the heirs has passed away, the heirs of the deceased heir. Step into their shoes.
Correct.
And if they don't have any heirs.
Um. They have heirs. If it's not, if it's not their, if it's not their children, it would be their spouse. And if it's not, they don't have a spouse, it would be their siblings.
But I think if I'm not, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I, I believe that's not our decision. That would be their decision to come to us, not our decision to go to them.
Are you talking about the heirs?
The heirs. I mean, if they, if they don't, if they don't, yeah, they don't complain.
They have to come to us.
It goes to North Carolina.
But whoever the personal representative is, is also responsible for reaching out to. All of the heirs.
Which would be the long form that Ms. Harold would have to.
Yes.
But she would fill out the long form and then she would provide, she would serve copies on the heirs.
Yes, and then she would file it, file the original with the county clerk.
Ms. Harold, are you willing? To, did you hear what we said? Are you willing to complete the long form that's required to tell us how that money was dispersed? And then send copies to all of your, all of the heirs? Um, you can do that by mail to give them notice.
Yes, ma'am, I will. Now, if I don't have all the information, but I have a substantial part of the information. Of how, how my brother dispersed, of, I don't know how he. Dispersed his, his portion of his son. I would have to contact his daughter and see if she knows how he dispersed of a woman's daughter.
Okay, the ma, the main importance is how he dispersed, like whatever he received as, as part of being an heir is what's important here, not how he spent it. Cause he was still alive then.
Right.
So, um. We're going to have the county clerk get in touch with you about what you need to do. And if for any reason it's too much, um, you need to let her know.
Well, I just, uh, send me more information. I need to know also in an email. And, and, and letter form so I can proceed as, as the court requires.
May I make a suggestion?
I'll be happy with that. But then am I considered still the administrator or just that?
My suggestion would be to give Ms. Harold a deadline to get this paperwork submitted. And then if she fails to comply with the deadline, leave the issue of replacing her open. So that way we're not sitting here waiting for something to happen that may never happen. Cause then we're going to be right back where we were before we considered this.
You're, you're trying to be proactive rather than react.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
If, if the other family miss. I'll be happy to, about, uh, any, any requirements that you, uh, accept.
So Ms. Harold, do you think you could get it done in 45 days? If you get all the information you need?
Yes, ma'am. I'll, 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 sure require.
All right. We will have the, the county clerk will give you a call, um, after the meeting sometime and, and it'll be all, her office will give you all the information you need.
And I'll have to submit an order reflecting what the commission's decision was.
Okay.
There is an order in the packet that it's not.
For, to approve it, which you are not approved.
So I'm going to move that we, um. Not remove Ms. Harold, not follow the fiduciary. Not remove Ms. Harold, not follow the fiduciary commissioner's recommendation and that we leave Ms. Harold on the estate, um, for forty five more days.
And if she fails to get the estate settlement paperwork submitted within forty five days, the commission will read this as the issue of replacing her as personal representative.
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Here we have a motion is properly moving second. All those in favor?
Aye. Okay, thank you, Ms. Harold.
Thank you, uh, for your hard work from that. Not many.
Do you have a phone number?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um. We're going to move on to the natural resources peak access request of the animal shelter.
May I, uh, ask a favor? No. Um. Our new employee is here waiting for this employment to be approved.
Oh.
I was wondering if we could get that taken care of so I can send Mr. Lilly back across the street to.
What's it worth to you?
If she wants to pay for sitting in here and taking up space, then I'm sure he won't care.
Sure, go ahead, Anthony.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Um, as I indicated in my, um, emails, we've extended an offer of employment to Chad Lilly. Chad, would you come on up here?
Uh, Chad comes to us from Raleigh County Prosecuting Attorney's Office for very good things about him and his work, work ethic. And. No problems with criminal background check. Um, he does at least have two years' experience as a, uh, an assistant prosecuting attorney. So we're, we're lucky to have him and we're like for the commission to approve his hire.
And then he's, he did start already, right? So we're doing it enough for a time?
Yes, his first, his first day was Monday.
Okay, so I move that we approve the hire for a time.
To January sixth.
Second. We have motion is properly moved to the second. All those in favor?
Aye. Welcome, Ted.
Okay. Come on up.
Hi, uh, my name is Anne Wakeford. I work for the West Virginia Division of Natural Resources in Williams. And I also have a VP, um, Corey Barton, who's a district city biologist for the, um, for the region. And my, my job with the DNR is I evaluate highways projects through, throughout the state, but Corey's like boots on the ground. And this, um, reason why this is on the agenda is I, um, attended a highways field review on December third. Um, at the Animal Shelter Bridge, um, go to the next slide. That's actually my car parked. This is showing the bridge going, going across to where the animal shelter is. And basically this area crosses Laurel Creek. And it's an area where the DNR stocks fish. It's also a high quality warm water stream. And I was told that, um, you all own the property. So basically. The reason why we're on the agenda is, um, what we would like is when they replace the bridge, they're either going to be replacing the bridge upstream or downstream of the current, um, location. So what we would like is if, if you all are in agreement to it, it's a small sloping area down to the creek. And we would like it to be kind of maintained so, um, fishermen can access that area and also park. Um, over in that area for when they're fishing. Go to the next, next picture. These are just some sort of pictures showing Laurel Creek and accessory. I think I got six or seven pictures. So basically that's what, um, what we would, what we would like. Um, if it's okay with you, I've got, um, those are my business cards, my direct phone numbers on the back, but I'm going to ask, um. Uh, this is just showing our field review. I'm going to ask Corey to give some more details and talk about why this area is important and what we'd like. And if you are in agreement, um, with it, then I will contact highways. So when they actually do do this project. Um. And say, hey, you were all, um, in agreement with this area, but Corey can say, can talk further to see if more familiar with it. This is where we were all parking to look at the field review and field site.
Yeah, so we recently, it's not published, but we had a relevancy study done with the agency and. The leading cause of people not being able to recrea- recreate outdoors. Outside of not having enough time because of light was physical or health challenges. And this stream where it's located is a nice low gradient. Having that access in there would be really easy to get, you know, anger to the water body as well as just. The, the road bed along it's all, it's a nice substrate. It's not rocky cobble. Um, so people with, you know, older people and those with some kind of physical challenge would be better suited to be able to access the water there. And having a graded path there and allowing parking there would benefit the residents and potentially tourists coming to the region to recreate in that stream. Kind of a side note, I don't know if this is the proper place to ask this or not, but I was told that there was a county commissioner, previous county commissioner. Who would potentially have been arrested at the county park. The pond there making a class Q handicap and, and children and being able to stock that with trout. Um, I was given the go ahead, to go ahead and pursue that. I'm not sure if that's going to need to be put on the agenda in the future. Or what the proper procedure is for that, um, but that's a whole other ballgame. That would involve an lease agreement. Restful list has an access site, but put it in there, but. I just want to kind of plant a seed on that one.
That would have to be another agenda item.
And we'd want you to get with our park director and discuss that.
That sounds great.
I saw you moving, I saw you moving around there around the corner of my eyes.
That's good. And then also if this project helps us get the bridge across to the animal shelter, which is in. Severity, I mean, because right now UPS, every bag of food that goes comes to the park. And then he gets down in there and says like, dude, this helps the DOH. Want to put a bridge there, that's going to be a, a must for, for a couple of weeks. Obviously you have the gun club over there. My, my question is, is we do have to be careful with that parking area down there because we have our subject. Off to the left and you're going to cross that bridge is over there to your left. So we have to obviously really pay attention to that. And if some of these. Subject lines and things like that aren't the best mapped out, right? To do a little plan. So this is obviously if, if you're going to, this project that you guys are talking about comes after a DOH. There's, there'll be studies, we'll have more information about where that best spot for the park.
Basically with the state highway thing is it's, they're already going to be doing the work and having the equipment. Um, it's just a matter of our ask for giving them permission to disturb the stream. Is they do this for us, which is going to be minimal cost for state highways because they're going to have the ground door up and everything else as well.
It's basically to ask them to leave, you know, a path down to the water after they bring, after they bring all their equipment in and not cover it up and, and seed it. So, so our fishermen can, can accept it. Like, I mean, we need to get your approval since you own the area. And I, it could be a win-win situation. People could come over and fish and say, hey, we want to adopt a cat or a dog. Cause they hear all those dogs barking from the animal shelter, right? So it could be a win-win situation for, for everybody.
So, uh, how, how much parking are we talking? What, what, uh?
Honestly, I just started in October and I haven't been around during trout season. Um, I was in Parkersburg for the last five years. We didn't have any trout up there. But, uh, you know, I mean, I would imagine three, four spots. I mean.
So we're talking a small lot.
Not like a.
A few cars.
I mean, two, three simply they'd be asked, you know, just kind of like, you know, grab a pull off kind of thing and, you know, somewhere they can access it or even the existing. Area there is kind of designated spots, you know, as far as, as angler access.
Well, we could designate spots for that.
Bob just wrote a couple of styles of it. And the access you said, you, you're just, you're just requesting our approval for an access to it. Once you're down on the water, you can access the water from that point.
Yes.
And more of it.
I mean, we don't.
Everybody's not going to stay in one spot.
If you, if you are in approval, when highways come in and we're there, we're there equipped, and we're just asking. If it's all right for them to just leave this path where they put in their equipment so fishermen can more easily access the water as opposed to everything and up in, in reseeding it.
Have you received any complaints from anyone in that area about this idea?
No, you own the property, so it's, it's kind of, it's kind of up to you. So.
Yes.
So then with the county.
We are the county.
And access.
I mean, people are already fishing through there because dock water bodies and people can't access. So I imagine it's probably the intersection or somewhere near the intersection where the county park. And it's about a half mile left of the current bridges. We stop. Because you guys own it, people are able to, to, to access the stream coming across your property. And all we're asking for is like, allowing people to park there, not risking a citation for parking some like animal shelter, not visiting animal shelter. And just having that, that basically it, it's kind of, it's a steep bank right now and getting into it. It's a little disadvantaged to the people, you know, older people and, and, you know, those with physical challenges. So we're just asking for just basically. A human boat ramp down to the water's edge, you know, just like a walking path down to the water's edge.
So, no complaints. In the years that I've fished that creek. Um, you may see two or three cars except for on the day that the stocking happens because there's people following the stock truck. And there needs to be a law in the books that says, hey, you've got to wait ten days after we stock the fish to distribute. But I know, I know, that's my own thing. Um, however, there, there's, you agree with that? However, there's a, there's a normally one or two cars that you see down there part. I don't see it as, as a large issue. Um, and, and people have access to the stream and if this could help a, a veteran or someone that, that's disabled to get down the stream, you know, I'm all for it.
What does, what do those roads tend to look like? What are they? Are they gravel or?
Um, basically the, when highways, highways will basically come into the area. And they'll, you know, get their equipment in, they'll either be replacing the bridge upstream or downstream, and they're going to need to make kind of like a path going, going to the water. And I mean, I'm guessing that if we ask them and we provide gravel, we could get the path gravel. I'm not sure.
Yeah, it'd probably just be gravel path. I mean.
We can make, we can make it gravel.
Twenty-four, thirty inches wide. We can't really. Claim it as handicap just because the ADA requirements are any else, but handy.
You guys will also provide signage?
Yeah, they can, yes.
What about the other side of the, like of the creek, not animal shelter side?
Well, the other side is kind of, I mean, when I was down there during the field review, I mean, traffic's kind of whizzing by there. And I think on the animal side, shelter side, it's definitely safer because there's already area there that could easily, people could easily. Park and access and it's a little, it's definitely less steep. And he has all his entries there that I, so he showed on your vises. Right? So if you, I mean, if you want or if you need to, we can, you know, schedule another.
We do have like, like you're saying, there's a, there is a wide spot on both sides. That left side on the opposite side of the park or the opposite, which is still, I believe, park property on that side also. There's a, a little leeway thing, way that peaks out there, but I'm not one hundred percent sure. But that, that spot's actually low too. And if they're going to be doing his bridge work, you know, they're going to be doing a lot on both sides. So. That's your, your ultimate evaluation, I think, of what the best parking spot would be, either side of that bridge.
And they don't have a, they haven't picked a plan yet, right?
Um, no, I'm not sure if they're going to be doing going upstream or downstream of the bridge. And when we have these reviews, usually the project isn't started till, you know, a few years later. But I guess if you all are in, you know, agreement with this, I can send them an email and say, hey, when you get the final plans, um, you know, let us know. And then you can have, you can have further discussions. But before I could even ask them, I had to get girls approved.
I would say what he's saying is it doesn't matter location necessary, just need approval to be able to ask the state highways for it.
I'm, I'm open to it. It, but the maintenance question is a question. So. You know, if, if there's gravel, we're going to have to maintain it and that's something we need to consider. As you're having discussions with them. I don't know that we want to put gravel down because then we'll have to keep putting gravel down.
I would say probably not because they gravel is likely to get the stream and sedimentation. I would say leave it, leave it as, as dirt because gravel is going to cause. So that's just mine.
Well, that's mine too, because I, I don't want the park service to have to, you know, clean down gravel on the regular. Soon as Creek rises, it's all going to be gone.
As Corey was saying, we're open to, we're open to either side. It just seemed like the animal shelter side was easier because there's already sort of flat. Area and place to park a lot of vehicles. You saw from my pictures. A bunch of people parking. There's about a dozen people there for the review. So it's already easy parking over there. They wouldn't have to dig out any more certain parking spaces.
I mean, I trust Brian's judgment and figure, working with highways to figure out where to put that.
And then if we do get, um, uh, approval from you all, who's the best, um, one of you to contact or should I just go through, just go through?
Go through.
I think she should just coordinate with Brian directly.
Yeah, right. Yeah. If you're going to do something around that area, um, coordinate with Brian. Brian's our park director. Uh, he takes care of all the properties over there. Uh, and then if it's anything other than that, go through Ruth.
Yeah. Brian will bring it to Ruth.
I think it's a great opportunity.
Okay. Well, I move that we approve the access. Roads stay in place.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion property moving second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, and commissioners. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and remember Chris legislature to pass a law this year. That there has to be dissipation of the fish before anyone can go and fish.
That would involve our commission and people. That's a whole other ballgame there. That's not going to happen.
Yeah, I know. Oh.
We can't pass a law on, like, fish that a hundred feet must stop and we're getting so.
Put on a positive.
Okay, um, we're going to take a ten minute break and we'll be back.
Our association leaders. We can't stop tomorrow night, it's ended our deals. Thank you.
All right. Like to bring back to attention.
He's got it up here, don't. It's like the whistle, the gamble, they're all off limits.
I didn't know if we told you that too late, not teasing.
Okay. Our IRS changed the standard dollars rate to seventy cents per mile. Moved it approved.
Yeah.
Four hundred rebrand. So I move to approve the molly rate to the IRS molly bill.
Second, property moving second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next is your budget memo to the elected officials.
Is it the same as we've been doing?
Yeah, same thing. I want to go over the attachment to make sure everything, especially the PIA, because that's a lot of money.
Yeah, it is.
So.
I mean, we prove it.
Second, got properly moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next is your legal notice and the letters to the assessor and the prosecuting attorney designating times for award of equalization and review.
I move that we through the letters.
Second.
And the legal notice.
Properly moved to second. Uh, need a, everyone in favor?
Oh, aye.
The next one is a clarification of the prior agreements.
Okay, so we had, when we paid off the loan, um, on Wolf Creek Park. We failed to clarify the purpose of paying off that loan, which is for the purchase of the land, um, that used to belong to our U R A. Um, it was to purchase the land in order to develop it for housing. Cause we had some fears based on some of the interest in it previously that. Um, it was going to be developed for other purposes and housing is a critical need in Fayette County. So we just want to clarify, um, and add that clarification to the minutes for October nineteenth of twenty twenty-three. Um. So I'm going to move that we do that.
I'll second.
All of them.
I would accuse myself of, of my previous meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. Um. So we have a motion that's properly with the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The next is the high intensity drug trafficking area grant, you just, you guys need to sign the contract. Let's say, is this is mostly for deputy sheriff. Actually, with the drug task force, surely.
Some of we proved.
Second. Properly moving second. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next is a, did you sign?
Do we all have to sign it?
No, I think just don't.
Okay, we're, let's keep number six because I think we're going to have to go into executive session for real.
All right, so then the next item will be the.
Cyber security.
Cyber security grant for approval.
And move we approve it?
Second. Have a motion that's probably moving second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Miss. Ready, are you on anyway? When you said that you're starving out, really ready.
It worth as he goes alongs?
Were you cramping up?
Hey, there you are, how's that?
All right, and then the. Next one is just a drawdown resolution for. Three three four, this one. Um, it's tied to the flooding, I believe, it's basically a drawdown for them to be paid for their work they did during. I don't remember which level down.
I move that we approve it.
A second. Well, motion is probably moving second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can sign that after I either.
Okay.
We have the letter to the fire chiefs and the fire association requesting. Pay off amounts on all the outstanding loans on the fire trucks and the loan terms, so we can take a look at all of them, see if we want to pay any of those off and. Look at them all at once. Let's see what's. So I move that we approve the letter requesting that information.
Second.
We have motion probably moving second, all those in favor?
Aye. Brown builds, Amy.
Okay, so the grant is three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Um, we have spent only about seventy-eight thousand dollars. Um, we have about eighty thou, or actually a hundred thousand allocated for, um. Previously approved projects. Um, the property over on Route sixteen, um. Close to Wolf Creek Park entrance, um, the Reynell Trailhead at the landfill. And then the building in Montgomery, so that leaves us again about two hundred thousand dollars that we still need to spend. Um, region four took on the Collins Middle School, um, building. And they spent all of their money and then realized. That the asbestos testing that they had on file was not adequate for. What, um, D E P requires and EPA requires, so they have asked us if we could cover, um. The expenses for another asbestos testing, it'd be about eight thousand dollars, which, um, considering that was our original project. I think that's a good way to spend our money, um. We also have. Requests, um, we've got the new reap grant, um, so we'll need to do asbestos testing on any of the houses. That we, um, choose for, um, demolition for the reap grant, so I would like you to approve, um, just that in advance. And then we would also like to do ACM, which is asbestos, um, mold and. I can't remember what the other one is. It's the testing we did on the jail. And we would like to do that same and structural testing on the courthouse, the sheriff's building, the annex, and then, um, certain buildings at the park. Um, I estimate based on the previous amounts that we spent on the memorial building and the jail. We would probably spend ten to fifteen thousand on that, maybe twenty, but that's still going to leave us with a hundred and fifty thousand or so, so. So I'm asking permission to. Have, um, Greenbrier Environmental do the asbestos testing on Collins. And then as needed for the reap houses, and then do the ACM testing and structural analysis on the courthouse, um, properties and the park.
I'll move that we prove it.
Thank you.
Second. Have a motion properly moved to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, and then the dilapidated housing reap grant, um, it really just needs to be a matter of minutes that you guys approve to put that out. Properties out to be. Be a good.
Can I, uh, can I talk about this for a second? Last year, we received two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And we were able to work together and and, uh, take care of quite a few properties that were dilapidated. Um. This year, I I'm happy to say we received.
Five twenty.
Five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that we can take down more dilapidated properties. Um, and, uh. That's knows we got a bunch of them around. That need to come down. So. Uh, very thanks for that, thank you for your work on that one, I appreciate you and Amy. Okay, so.
Can I say one thing or ask one thing for it, so. Uh, part of the grant application, which I know on the twenty-second we have criteria, but. I would like to see, um, working with Amy and Anthony to do a press release, to have people who would like their house pulled down, to go ahead and start applying. Um, that way I can go ahead and get Anthony to do his due diligence to make sure they actually, so. If it's okay with the commission, I would like to get with Amy to do a press release and share on our website, Anthony shared on his page and.
Okay.
That way we can start gathering houses.
Email it to us, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, go ahead and.
And and I want to make sure we clarify that someone had one property taken down. They they probably won't be able to qualify for a second property to be taken down.
I think that's on the twenty second, I think we have some criteria.
Part of your criteria, yeah.
Yeah, so I'd just like to start gathering names, we have plenty of houses, but unfortunately, some of our houses are deceased people, so they're not going to be as willing and easy to find, so I'd like to get the public. And start applying, so.
We can fire them.
Yeah, we can fire them, so, um, maybe not their air. Right, yeah, that's a little more legal, so, um. We have eleven months left on the grant, so, um, but I'll get with Amy and get it out.
All right.
Yeah, maybe with our grants.
So.
Okay.
You need to.
We we do need to, okay, so.
Approved publicly.
I move that we approve the publication.
My second.
Have a motion a second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now I move that we go into executive session to have a meeting with our counsel.
Do you want to, do you want to hear from them first on the?
Well, we can. I mean, yeah, let's.
It might help to hear, let them lay the groundwork for what they, I mean, we have the letters, so this on the, um, Luna. So if you guys want to present to us how you think we can help.
And I will present to you how. I think we can help you make a wise decision. This is, these are, um, just brochures from Eric's original company, for thirty years, he's built. Timber frames and those are some of the pictures. Um. And, uh. He's built up a really successful business doing this, he's very good at what he does. He also is a champion of excellent customer service. So the people, uh, the architectural firms and engineering firms that work with him come back. Time and again. My name is Caroline Calvary, I'm the owner of Luna Music Experience. Eric Marshall is the managing. Uh, or the general manager. And I'm going to talk about his responsibilities in a little while. Um, also here was Levi, his son, he is here to plead for more time with his father. Um, and my twin sister Nina is here, she's the officer in charge of all things organized in Eric's business. I just want to give you all some more information about. Um, Luna and. Um, a little background and then how to address the issues that we're facing. Um. Several years ago, Eric started looking for a second stream of income. The real problem with his business is that it's very difficult to find. An assistant for Eric in the production of the timber frames. Eric sells the job, he designs the work, he raises the frames, and he, but he needs help building them. And it used to be really difficult, find someone who knew one end of a hammer from the other. It has now become impossible. And so this business is very rapidly becoming unsustainable. Um. And the result of not having a helper is Eric works all the time, he works routinely sixty hours a week.
Or that.
But it's usually more than that, and. When he works, we work, so. And Nina and I are all in favor of us finding another business as a family business. Um. Eric's job at Luna is going to be to watch, to observe. To see if anything illegal or dangerous is taking place and to address that immediately. We have. Software, when customers come in, we will s- screen their license plate, just like at a casino, they screen your license.
Driver's license.
Their driver's license or their state ID. And it tells them if the person is underage for drinking, and it tells us if there's a bench warrant out for them. Consequently, people who are. Uh, troublemakers tend to stay clear of places that do this kind of screening, they're far, um, greener pastures for them elsewhere. Um. Last year, we started looking at the. Fayette County Comprehensive Plan. We're big picture people, so we wanted to see what the big picture was. From, uh, the wise ones in the county and, um. And get an idea of where we could fit in that, without question, the natural wonders here are amazing. And people find lots to do during the day, in the evening, it's, it's a little less so. So we decided that we would build a world-class indoor dance venue. We found from the, um. Of playing that Haiko was an area of interest for development. So Eric talked to Jeff Edwards, who owns Free Folk out in Haiko. And we've rented space there. To, um, to house this facility. Um. I'm using notes, so I will be succinct and wonder. Um, from the time that the speakers were delivered from Tennessee Sound Design in Boston, MA. Eric has had DJs calling him, begging to come and play their music on these speakers, they are the best in the world, it's amazing. We've had bartenders calling, waitstaff calling, other businesses have helped wanted signs, we're kind of beating them off with a stick. So, you know, we know that we're going to be hiring people, we know that we're going to bring money into the county, we know we're going to bring money into the state. And may it please God, there be some left for us. Um. As you know, because of blah, 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 we were caught flat-footed when the fire marshal came in and said, nay, nay, you will not open on bridge day. Um. So since then, we've hired. Fire tower engineering to draw new plans for the building, and it's the architects. Who determine where doors go, where, um, sprinklers glow, um, capacity and things like that. So we are near getting, um. The plans back. We hope. Um, but they are working on them as we speak and, um. Once that comes in, they go to the fire marshal, and then we really get down to business. Um. We know what starts fires in these buildings that have events going on. I studied fifty-five fires between nineteen twenty-two and the present. And the data shows the starting of the fires, what starts a fire. Six of them were from smoking, but since nineteen sixty-seven, there's been no fire started by smoking because it's banned indoors. Thirteen were by arson. How that rep is relevant to Luna is it's a brick building and it's really hard to light those suckers. So we don't think that we're going to have arson. And we aren't going to do it. Fifteen were started due to power technique displays, all I have to say to that is not no, but hell no. Um, I can't imagine anyone having a power technique display in a building, but fifteen people have done it and got busted big time. Ten were due to electrical problems, mostly negligence. Um, the wiring in look in, uh. Free Folk was completely and professionally rerun in nineteen twenty-one, when he, excuse me, twenty twenty-one, when he, um. Bought the building. The chances of there being electrical power are very slim. Four were due to heating equipment, I mean, two of them were stove pipes, this is old time business, you know? So, and two were probably due to negligence, construction workers started four. Two welding accidents and two where construction workers left piles of, um. Rags with solvents on them. Eric's been in woodworking all his life, I used to sail boats and did a lot of painting on my boats and bright work and stuff like that. And so, you know, we know, you don't leave rags in a pot. And sad. Um, so. And then, oh dear, the worst, three catastrophic, catastrophic fires. Occurred because either the doors were locked or blocked. Nightmares are made of this stuff. Starting a fire at Luna is unlikely. But what happened after the fire started is the critical piece. And that is, there was not. Um. Preparedness, the lack of preparedness and the lack of the ability to take immediate action when the fire is small. Is what resulted in the catastrophe that these fires became, and there was loss of life in all of them. So what we are doing. Is we're making sure that we're going to do everything the fire marshal says, that is a given. Um. We've hired Fire Tower to do the plans and to make fire code recommendations, we're going to work with the fire marshal to, um. Agree on the kind of fire suppression system we should get. We are going to acquire additional funding to pa- to pay for the plans and to pay for the fire suppression system. We're going to maintain strict capacity limits. Capacity over limits were a part of part. Was a part of some of the fires that I looked at. We're not going to have that issue. Also, um, we're going to have eight fire extinguishers, two on each wall of the building. We're going to hire, um, two fire watch safety people whose only job. Is to watch out for fires for every event until an electronic system is installed. Um, they will have an air horn eh to signal if there's a problem. And we're going to provide staff training for all of our staff. There are some really good online classes, they're forty bucks a pop, they're five hours long. And all of our staff and us will have that training before we open. Um. And we also are going to advise our patrons when they come in, after they get past the driver's license thing, then. Probably Anita or I will be there and we're going to go over a list of things that they, um. Understand about the facility, we're going to show them exactly where the lighted signs are and the doors are. So if there's any issue, you you know, that they will know what to do. What we want you to know is that we take our responsibilities to you and the public very seriously. We are not cavalier or casual in this matter. The three of us have exceptional reputation. The three of us have exceptional reputations for high morals and integrity, high-quality work, and excellent customer service. We're honest, and we do the right thing. We also recognize your responsibility to the people of Fayette County and West Virginia, and in no way do we underestimate the faith you would be putting in us to do what we say, and the courage it will take for you to grant us permission open with a series of special events until the fire suppression system can be put into place, because we really need to meet financial obligations. We hope you can see your way to approve this request. Jean and Mara Kissler are here, if you have any questions about our moral caliber.
And you brought Jean?
What's your capacity?
The architect will, will determine that, and we don't know right now. We're waiting.
Absolutely. So I'm Eric Marshall, and the owner of Handcrafted Timberframe. You know, as she said, I've been doing timber frame construction about thirty years. As she indicated, it has become unsustainable for me. I cannot find someone to do what I do. I've also had a string of problems going on years that I have to fire people for druggies. It's just where we are in our society. So I have chosen to phase out of that business and to get into something that is more manageable and sustainable for me. So, we're working with, just to correct that, we're working with Ed Weber Architects. He's licensed architect in West Virginia and Florida, and we're having him draw up the plans. They're nearly done. After the fire suppression system is installed, our occupancy is gonna be around one sixty, based on this work footage and occupancy ratings. If we were to operate under the guidelines of having fire suppression, it's forty-nine. So if we were going to proceed with sort of a provisional zoning, it would be no more than forty-nine people. Believe that's it, and we're, we're just basically, I also, I also would like to ask from you, what is our path forward to getting the permanent zoning designation as well?
I have a couple of questions. Are you gonna use a dry or wet system for your fire suppression?
That's gonna be based on the vendor and what they recommend. We do have an eight-inch water line that's pretty close. It's accessible, but we're going to go with what the, the vendor recommends, whoever we contract to do the system.
Do you plan any fireplaces or anything in the building?
No.
What type, what type of heat?
It's a furnace, electric furnace.
What about the making of food?
We're not going to operate as a restaurant. It's gonna be basically the requirements for the health department and the ABC are basically to serve some refreshments, but we're not going to have a grill or, or fryers or any of that stuff. We're gonna basically be serving sort of your appetizer-type things or microwave items.
Okay. Have you done any, if we're talking about the building itself now? You, you rented a shell. Okay. Have you done any electric plumbing or moved any walls or installed any walls in that section?
No, I did not do any structural construction. I mean, I'm a general contractor. All I did was painting. I added some basically aesthetics.
So you know that if anything does happen, you know, adding doors, anything like that has to happen, building inspector out there.
Correct, correct.
I thought you knew that.
I do.
Alright. Any questions?
Who gave you the number forty-nine? Is, so your intent, if you're having these special events, is to have no more than forty-nine?
Correct, and that was from the fire marshal.
And the fire marshal gave you that, and I'm trying to understand what, so what you need from us is to, to send a letter to the ABC, right, so you can get?
Basically, it's a special events license. It would be similar to like a wedding caterer, like when you, if you had a party in a field or whatever, and you were having a wedding event, that a caterer could come there and have a little table with alcohol, something we have seen. You know, or there's something that everybody's familiar with. It's basically that type of provision. And this is something to, this is a bridge, because we are currently carrying the full overhead of a business that is not permitted to receive income. And so we're kinda struggling along, and we'd really like to be able to bridge that gap until we get the plans from the architect, engage with the fire marshal, get their recommendations, and install the sprinkler system. That could take four more months.
Is Jeff going through this exercise on his side of the building with the fire marshal also?
Um, I think he's gonna have to put in a couple of doors.
And, and he serves too, doesn't he?
I believe they might.
I thought they were probably planning to.
I think that, yes, yes, I believe they are.
Down, but I don't know if it's gonna be where the other business was.
There's a fire, there's a concrete block firewall separating these two businesses. Yes.
So, I wanna make sure that I understand this correctly before we go into executive session to get some information from our attorney. You're asking for a special use permit similar to what they use for weddings for outdoors?
Correct.
So are you gonna do this outdoors?
No, it would be inside.
And a, and a period of time you're talking would be relevant to when you can get up to code?
Correct, and we, that is undetermined. We're, we're pretty close to getting the plans from the architect that are stamped with the, their recommendations, and then we present that and meet with the, the fire marshal, or send it to him via mail, and then that way, that way, we, a- after that point, we seek vendors to bid on the job. And so this process could take a little while, and as I said, we're just trying to meet our, our monthly overhead.
And the fire marshal has to go over the plans and stamp them also that they're legal, and then he puts the job out to bid, and then he puts the job out to bid, and then they figure out who's gonna come in and do it.
Well, I'm gonna move that we go into executive session to get legal advice on this matter.
It'll be at ten fifty. And just come back out of executive session where no decisions were made, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Taylor.
Okay, do you guys have some documentation from the fire marshal about that forty-nine limit?
As far as I know, it's just sort of a general code, but I'm, I can produce that.
Can you produce it?
Yes.
Okay, we called the ABC during an executive session, just to make sure that sort of schedule is permissible, and they confirmed it is. And with the fire marshal certification, I think we're all comfortable with moving forward. So I'm gonna move that we approve the letter pending the confirmation of the capacity information from the fire marshal.
Great, thank you very much.
I'd also like to add that I would also like to add that you receive a letter from the fire marshal stating that you can have those special events on the dates indicated, and give them a copy of the dates.
Great, thank you.
Do you guys need a letter from the commission? What, what do you need from the commission to submit?
Basically, submitted us a draft letter, Anthony, with all the dates, and, and I'm fine with the content of that. It, it's just a matter of getting what John requested in before we send it. So, so I'll revise my motion to approve pending receipt of the documentation that Commissioner Brennaman requested. And once the county administrator gets that information, then we can send a letter.
So there's no time frame. It's on you guys just to receive the letter from the fire marshal stating that he's fine with you guys holding those events.
I'll second the motion.
Alright, we have a, a motion approved in second. All those in favor?
Good luck with everything.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That was last time.
Yes. What are you trying to say?
There's all the letters you need to sign.
Does anybody else have to, okay, John has to sign these. We get started on all. I'll start these.
That was not on air. He said that he heard.
There's two sheets there.
We always sign in blue.
That's why I gave you a new pen.
Yeah.
Oh, I gave you.
Well, you don't need ice in your drink in the office. You should do that each time you are elected.
We've finished everything, but we. Okay, I'm gonna move it, Jen.